There's also the lead service line replacements. And that's another thing, if we don't go through this project, we'll end up cutting the entire street apart anyways. On Monroe Street, we had over a third of the water service lines were considered left in all those categories, which then we have to replace it. So we'll end up with a street that's all cut apart. But going through this project, that's going to be addressed at the same time.
And that's not on the homeowner, right? When that line has to be replaced, that is on the city's end to correct the problem.
Eagle or the state of Michigan has stated that it's part of the water distribution system all the way into the home. So if it's considered left.
Something, just for example, fears when we brought the water service option where if there was an issue with the line and with the galvanized line, we wanted the homeowner to replace it. We were trying to do that, trying to alleviate some of the costs going forward. When we first, when we were starting to look at our rates last time, the lead line issue was just really coming into light. And we're at, we have $100,000 in the budget this year for just investigation of lead lines and another $50,000 for removal. Asset investigations, we're probably going to be setting aside $150,000 annually in new expenditures that when we were planning this a few years back, that wasn't even a part of this conversation. And so that's a significant, that's a significant expense to, and I think our, I want to say our revenue, our water fund generates about 1.4 million dollars and our wastewater funds about 1.3 million annually. I'm just kind of spitting numbers off the top of my head. But that's a significant cost to our, to our system. And one of the advantages there is we are going to be seeing, now that we have a better handle of what we're doing with the lead lines, now we can actually start going for grant funding for some of that lead line removal. That's something we will probably qualify for. But that being said, can we move on to the next slide, please? Thank you, Ralph.
Before you do the next slide, maybe Ralph, and maybe Brandon would be better, but can you talk a little bit about the cost of procrastination?
Sure.
Like an increase in construction costs, especially lately?
It's never going to be cheaper than it is right now. We had a really good competitive bid at a local contractor. So I mean, by pushing it off, if the inflation continues, even if it's normal inflation, would make things more expensive. And we're still in a bit of an inflationary time right now. So labor's getting more expensive, materials are getting more expensive, plus you potentially have emergency repairs, which are always more expensive than a planned repair, where you can go through a proper bid process.
We've had quite a few emergency repairs in the last year, both of the water and wastewater.
And at a market interest rate, right? Not a USDA interest rate.
Correct.
A lot of the stuff too, for example, emergency repairs, you can't find it. It's coming out of cash.
Yeah. It's unbudgeted. Labor is at overtime rates in the middle of the night. And I speak from experience, it always seems to happen at the very worst time. It's, you get that call and there's nothing you do. You have to repair it.
And they can charge you whatever they want because you can't tell them no.
Yeah, absolutely. And you don't have time to go through the bid process. Yeah. It just amplifies every step of the way. It just gets more expensive or time consuming.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I just thought that was important.
No, that's a good question. No, thank you.
I thought that was important.
Sure. Can we go to the next slide? Okay. So just continuing on, these are revenue bonds. They're financed through the city's water and sewer rates. Warren, can you kind of just kind of explain a little bit more what revenue bonds really are?
Water revenue bonds, sewer revenue bonds are supported solely by the enterprise funds. The net revenues of the system, revenues after the payment of O M and R are dedicated towards the repayment of the bonds. Market convention requires certain covenants be made by the issuer of the revenue bonds. Typically, they require the issuer to set rates in some multiple of debt service. They want to make sure that any additional bonds also meet that same rate requirement. And they typically require the establishment of a debt service reserve due largely to the consumption variable of water and sewer commodities. And the nice thing here with USDA, you're given the opportunity to finance that debt service out of funds on hand over the next 10 years as opposed to upfront. It's unlike a G O bond, which is a first budget obligation of the issuer, secured by the full faith and credit and taxing power of the community. I'll tell you, I'll take a revenue bond issue any day over a G O, given the state of affairs in Michigan, you have far more flexibility to set rates and ensure a revenue stream necessary to pay debt service on the bonds. So that's it, kind of in a nutshell. Again, you know, by, it's an enterprise fund and by its very nature, it really should be self-supporting. It should cover the operation, maintenance, repair of the system, plus debt service.
You lost me a little bit on the 10-year payment. You said 10 years, there's a...
Yeah, that's to fund the debt service reserve requirement. And again, that reserve requirement...
What is that reserve?
The reserve requirement, there's a test. It's typically the lower of three. It's usually 10% of par, 125% of average P and I, and then, or max P and I. And they typically take the lowest one. USDA has a lower, you know, debt service reserve requirement, which is good. It's less money that you have to come up with, not only upfront, but over time.
When you mean P and I, you mean principal and interest.
In interest, that's correct.
Everybody in the room is now aware of all of the...
My apologies.
I know some of it, but I'm sure most people aren't exposed to any of it every day.
So just continuing on, under our current agreement with, these are non-integrated costs, meaning the city is solely responsible for paying these loans. This is not, there are capital expenses in the system that can be through either the 18% rate model with Lowell Towns for wastewater or the rate methodology that can be passed to them. In this instance, that cannot happen. That cannot happen. This is not their issue. This is solely our issue. What is being presented to you are two options for both water and sewer, and they both require rate increases. The future capital projects not related to the wastewater and water plant expansions have been accounted for up to fiscal year 2029, 2030 at a rate of forecast, which we presented.
That's correct. Fiscally, fiscal year 2030.
Correct. And so those have all been, those capital projects have all been taken into account now. And the city currently has roughly 400 days in cash on hand reserves in both the water and the wastewater funds. What that basically means is the amount of money, the revenue you have after your expenses, after your expenses. So it's about 400 days in reserve. We're sitting good, but we should be about 200 days to nine months or...
For a system of this size, you're looking at prudent operating reserves of approximately nine months of funds on hand. But as you all mentioned earlier, you know, you've been putting Band-Aids on, you know, problems that are far more costly than, it was you who probably said it, bidding out in a more organized fashion to take care of, you know, a need as opposed to being at the mercy of, you know, middle of winter at, you know, 10:00 at night, you know, trying to fix it.
So we got about $1.5 million in reserve and $1.6 million reserve, but we probably used, I want to say we, going forward, we've used about $400,000 cash in hand on the wastewater fund for the capital projects this year and next fiscal year, not including, well, not including this project. And I want to say about, about $500,000 on the water over the, over the next year as well. So we're trying to, we're trying to use some of the cash on hand for some of the other capital projects not related to this project. So, because there are, there are some items that got to be addressed in the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant in the budget that, that are part of this, but they're not part of this. So we've taken that money out to try, try and address that system. Could we go to the next slide, please?
Mike, if I could.
Sure.
It's important to point out that it was, you know, the administration's goal to minimize, you know, the rate impact from, you know, the proposed capital improvements. What the city did in lieu of a large increase upfront, the city is using part of those cash reserves to smooth out the rate increases and keep it in, let's just say, more palatable. No one likes rate increases, but we're trying to keep it more palatable, you know, for, you know, the user.
Right.
And those dollars come back to the city over a period of time, but it's very important to remember that you're really looking at about nine months of reserves, proved reserves from a credit standpoint. And then you're using, and unfortunately, you have to show it, but you are using some of those dollars over the next two fiscal years to, again, to smooth out those rates.
So just something else to look, I mean, I've been asked, well, what other options have you done? Well, I mean, I've heard, well, why don't you use your LCTV funds? Well, the LCTV funds are about $120,000 a year that we get in the interest off the endowment. If we use those funds, you're within your right to do it. I would, I would, I would just recommend, I would urge you maybe to think about that because you do have, we do, we are working on an issue. This issue came up in the past. I believe they use LCTV funds to pay for a road, and that was not very popular amongst the neighboring jurisdictions. And you're well within your right to do that, but I would caution you because I think, as I said, in regards to the other issues that we have with the water, the wastewater treatment plant, my concern is moving forward with that, I think any opportunity you have to benefit the city of Lowell with those two issues go away. That being said, that's one option. The other option is, well, why don't you just use your marijuana excise act to maybe pay down some of the stuff and move money around? Very well on your options as well, the only, the only issue with that is you're not, I mean, we have a, we have an aggressive road plan this year. We have $2 million in funds for different funds and how we move money. We have $2 million this year in other road improvements, not Washington Street. If you took the Washington Street component, Washington Street project, just the road paving is about another $750,000 that will be paid for through this loan. If you took the $750,000 out of the other, out of, from the other projects, you run the rest, one of the plans was to address Lafayette and the Cross Streets this fall to do that. In addition, Ottawa Street, which is being paid for by the DDA, but you also have Brook Street. That's a very, I don't think people even know part of that, part of the city even exists, but we're, we're trying to get streets all over the city. So if we take the money away from, from that, if we take the money away from that to do, to do this, you're Robin Peter to pay Paul. And I'm not, I can't recommend Robin Peter to pay Paul, and I also can't recommend stepping on a dollar and save a dime. So those are, those are all different scenarios that we, you know, we thought about. We tried getting grants, as I've said before. Warren could tell you, Brandon could tell you. Those grants don't exist for us, so we're on our own. So we've come up with two options for both the water and sewer charges. The first option, as you know, is increased ready-to-servant consumption charges on this upcoming year, 5%. Next year, ready-to-servant consumption charges, 35.37. We had an original analysis for the next, for '25, '26, and correct me if I'm wrong, of 86%. That wasn't going to fly, we knew that. And so when we, when we first saw that, we went back through our capital projects over the next five years and really kind of said, okay, do we got to move things down the road? Because, because the way, when we did that, we basically just took our, what SAW said and just kind of, they gave us a guideline as to what to do, but we moved it, we moved it around with a way that I think addresses our needs, and our staff has looked at this umpteen times to determine what's needed and what, you know, what's not. We've even had projects that the SAW and the Water Asset Management said that we, one of those projects, we can kick till 2040. There's a couple of projects in, and that master list says in your packet, but we just said we're not going to do it. So understand that. In '26, '27, and '27, '28, under option, option A, you would have near zero increase. You would, and then in '28, '29, you see a 2.2 increase, percent increase, and a 15.44 percent increase in '29, '30. When we've had this issue in the past, we've always tried to smooth it out over time. So that was option A. If you can go to the next slide, please. What does that look like over the monthly increase amount? So what, what these amounts show is how much the increase would be annually for the annual, for the, for the system, the consumption charge and the ready-to-serve. And it's all over the map. You have some years where you have zero increase. You have a, you know, the next year, you will be looking at a $1.34 increase on the ready-to-serve and 13 cent increase on the consumption charge. The consumption charge is what you pay per 1,000 gallons. And you also have, next year, you're looking at a $9.99 increase on the ready-to-serve and a 97% increase on the consumption. And then you have really low for the next couple of years, but then in '29, '30, you have a $6 increase on ready-to-serve and a 59 cent increase on the consumption. If you take the six-year average of what your annual monthly increase would be, just the rates alone, it's a $3.03 increase to the ready-to-serve and a 30 cent increase to the consumption here. That's the six-year average every year. If you go to the next slide, please. What's the projected monthly charge? So this is where I broke the rates down and the consumption charges. You start out at 20, this year, you're, you're currently at $26.88 for your ready-to-serve for a residential 5/8 meter, which is the majority, like 95, 96% of our system. And you have $2.62 per 1,000 gallons. That, that increases, next year it's 28, 22, and a $2.75 for the consumption. I'm just going to show, I'm not going to walk you through it, but you're, you're going from, in the first year, $26.88 and 2.62 in the, in the per 1,000 gallons, to in '29, '30, you're looking at a $45.08 ready-to-serve charge and $4.39 on the consumption charge. And if you can go to the next slide, please. So the other option that we've proposed is to steady that increase. And we're, and we're recommending an increase on the ready-to-serve and the consumption charge of 9.66% from fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 29, '30. If you go to the next slide, the, the increase is more gradual over time. It's, you don't go from a two, you know, from a, from a $1.32 to a $9.99. It's gradual over time. The, the average annual increase throughout the six years is a $3.31 on the ready-to-serve and a 32 cent on the consumption. So if you go to the next slide, your projected costs, the first year, you're going from $26.88, which is the current rate now, to in '29, '30, you're going to $47.01, $4.55 on the, on the consumption charge. It's a, it's a gradual increase over time, over the six-year period. And if you go to the next slide, we start looking at the first option of sewer. Now, one of the issues we've had over the years with, with the water and sewer, the rates, many years ago, we had recommended rates for Michigan Rural Water. They had kind of given us a projected rating, you know, of what it would look like from like 2005, and basically for the first, I want to say they did like a nine-year rate study, 10-year rate study, and then after that, just on 2%, 3% interest rates. On the water end, the city did not follow the rate recommendations that were set forth that were significantly less than what was recommended on the water end. The sewer end, we tended to follow relatively close as to what the recommendations have been throughout time. The big issue with the sewer end though, is those years when the biodegester was shut down, we lost a significant amount of revenue on wastewater due to the closure of the wastewater treatment portion of the biodegester. That was when Lighthouse was trucking significant amount of processed water out to Muskegon. It was a, it was a hit to the fund. But we were, during those years, we still never saw any, like, we never ran our fund into deficit. So we could, so going at the sewer, the sewer is not nearly as bad as the water, but the first year, we would propose a 6% increase, next year a 21.28% increase. '26, '27, you'd have no increase, 0.59% '27, '28, and 3.71 in '28, '29, and then a 7.57% increase in '29, '30. Walking you through what that would look like on the spreadsheet, if you can go to the next slide, please. So the, the ready-to-serve annual increase does, it does kind of go all over the place. Next year, you would see a $1.75 increase on your ready-to-serve and your 29 cents on your consumption, $6.63 on the ready-to-serve. The next year, $1.9 increase on your consumption. That should be your largest jump during the six years. And then you have some relatively low numbers, but then in '29, '30, $2.96 on the ready-to-serve, 49 cents on the consumption charge. Your six-year average annual monthly increase, your annual increase to the monthly fee, $2.16 on the ready-to-serve, 36 cents on the consumption. If you go to the next slide. And then you just show what the rates look like going forward. You start with a ready-to-serve at $29.11. That would be the July 1st rate, and then $4.80 per 1,000 gallons. It does jump up to $42.06 in '29, '30, and $6.94 on the consumption charge. If we go to the next slide, the next slide is, is a gradual rating, you know, the gradual option, I like to call it. '24, '25, '25, '26, '26, '27, we're proposing an increase of 9.66%. And then in '27, '28, and 20, through '29 and '30, we're looking at an annual increase of 4%. And if you look at the, if you look at the next slide, please, the, the interest rates a little bit, or sorry, the rates are more of a gradual increase, but as time goes, that annual increase does go down less. And your average for the six years is $2.35 and 39 cents on the consumption. So if we go to the next slide, and then these would be your monthly costs for the, for the rates on, going forward, what they would look like on paper. So you're going from $29.11 and $4.80 on the consumption, up to $43.18 and $7.11 on the, on the consumption. So going to the next slide, I'm going to kind of move along. So, yeah.
Wow.
So I'm going to show you my bills. I am a city resident, and I want to make a disclosure for the community chatter. I don't get the city manager's special rate. I want that known. So I want to show what my, I figure, well, I'm going to look at my March bills. My March water and sewer bill was $78.25. That's actually relatively low for me.
Yes.
No, that was before we left. And then my light and power bill is about $111 a month. That's pretty normal for me. I'm on a budget plan for consumers. My cell phone bill is $140 for me and my wife, and my cable and internet bill is $228. I don't even want to get into discussion about that. And my property taxes. I am a city resident, I pay 6,300 roughly in property taxes to, in property tax, of which, just so everyone remembers, about a third of the summer taxes is what the city receives. So my pay, my, my property taxes, the city receives $1,753. So I'm just showing my bills. So go to the next slide, please. So my, I was able to have the ability to go back 12 months and, and look at my, my bills, and in my scenario, we on average use about 4.75 units. So the way it works is one month, if you, if you use 4.75 units for the month, the one month, you would be charged four months, and then when that month, because we don't, we don't, we don't bill in decimals, we bill in numbers. So once you get to like the next unit, you would then be filled five units for that month. So it's, it's a little confusing, but that's how it works. And as I said, the average, the average residential customer in the city has a 5/8 meter, uses on average four or five units a month. And so the city builds consumption based on the water, which passes through the water meter, and uses this amount for water and sewer consumption if you receive both services. So going forward, when we did our analysis, Warren and I, we did, we did an analysis of 4.5 units per month. And if you go to the next slide. So what I did was, this is my monthly combined water sewer bill, or this is the average of 4,500 units under option A. This is the one where we have the sporadic rate increases. My first year, my utility bill is $89.38. Six years from now, the average 4,500 gallons for, not my utility bill, but just the average, is $138.13. Could you go to the next slide, please? If you take that increase over time, over the six years, that first table is what the increase is. I took the cable internet, the cell phone bill, the light and power bill, and the gas bill. I increased those by the, by the six-year average of the December Consumer Price Index, which was 3.75%. And that shows how much all those bills go up every month.
Every year.
Every year, I'm sorry. My monthly bill, every, every year, I'm sorry. And then I did the same for light and power. Now, I don't exactly know what light and power, you know, what the future rate analysis, I'm just, I'm just projecting on CPI. And then what I also did for my property tax was, I basically took, there is a, the way we determine how much the inflation rate is and how much property tax is increased under proposal A, it's called the inflation rate multiplier. I took the 30 years, every year average since proposal A has been in place, and it's 2.4%. So I just basically averaged my property taxes out on that. So I'm just showing that, it's just as an aside. But what I, what I'm showing is I'm paying for two water services, and I'm paying less for two services for water and sewer than I am for any of the other services. My light bill and my water bill and the last, under the CPI analysis, they roughly match in six years, but it, there is a, there is an increase to it. But normally, water bills for the, water, cost for water is significantly less than the cost of electric, but it is a cost. So if you can go to the next slide, I did the same thing for option B. And these are what the projections would be per month for water and sewer with the $4,500 consumption. So that is your, that's your increase. So if you go to the next slide, I projected that out. Same, same thing. You're still paying more for your cable and internet, your cell phones, your light and power, actually, under this model, the light and power bill is actually a little bit less than the water and sewer bill. But let's just say we didn't have light and power. Let's say we added 35% cost for consumers, which that would, that would throw it way off. But I hope you see that our, the cost for the service...
Two services.
Two services.
Yeah.
Two services.
That's important.
Yeah, it's two services, not one service. Is, is over time, less than what you're paying for all of these other services. If you can go to the next slide. So I did kind of just analyze what with that, with those mass amounts, if we were to look under the proposal B options, which is basically the gradual rate increases, if I took that six-year average dollar amount, what is the dollar amount per, per month in the average increase? It's about $8.82 a month increase, annually increase on, on the rate increase. That $8.82 a month is equivalent to a $10 piece Chicken McNugget meal at McDonald's. So granted, over time...
Now, that's going up too.
Well, exactly. But what I'm trying to show is, yes, I recognize this is an impact, and we have looked at every option. I have given you every piece of information I have in our arsenal. I've been doing analysis on this for, for a very long time. It's in your pocket, there's no, there's no hiding the data. We're at the point now, city council really needs to make a decision on the path forward, and as far as I'm concerned, we either need to address this issue or we can start preparing to manage our decline. It's, at this point, it's that eminent. So that's all I have.
Before we go to public comment, does anybody have any questions for Mike, or Warren, or Ralph, or Brandon? No? All right. We'll do some public comment.
I have comments, but I can use those in later.
Okay.
Craig Fonger, 827 North Washington Street. One thing I want to underscore is just remember, low light and power customers were paying what percentage less than consumers' energy?
About 27%.
27%. 27%. And then the next one is maybe more of a question. Mike, you touched on it when you were talking about it, but the potential plant expansions because of the townships. I think people are worried that some of these rate increases are due to that.
Right now, nothing has been.
And people need to be, it needs to be underscored that none of these costs include that.
Correct.
And that does happen, that the township will be paying their fair share.
Yes.
And that, yes, we will have some costs, but there are opportunities to integrate the upgrades that are needed in the system.
There, yeah. And like I said, I'm still working through, we're still working through that issue with the township. And I will tell you that I, I would not, I will not bring a, I will not agree to a proposal that doesn't, in my opinion, benefit the city of Lowell. It won't happen. I will not recommend it. There may be some aches and pains with what comes back. But if I am not comfortable with what's agreed with, it's not coming back. It's just not. But as I said before, we are, you know, we have to work through that. We have to work through that process still. And I'm very optimistic, where before I would not, six months ago, I would not have told you that.
Yeah. I agree. Anybody else from the public?
Perry Beecham, I reside at 924 Riverside Drive. As you can see, I have four or five pages. But a lot of the things that we talked about tonight answered quite a few of my questions. I'm just very disappointed that this wasn't done previously and all these, all these. And I'm just gonna go through it. Number one, I voted for and support the members of the council. And with that said, I believe, you know, you've got to stop blaming, and I've heard that, blaming previous councils and administration for things that arise where you feel that they just passed the buck. They did the best job with the best information that they had at the time. I say this before, learn from the past and apply it to the future. The others, not so much tonight, but a recent agenda talked about improving construction for Washington Street, but never alluded to, oh, there's gonna need to be rate increases, water and sewer. And many people that I've, have come up to me or talked to me and said, you know, I thought they were just approving what they were, who was bidding. So again, I, I think Lowell needs to be more, as tonight, more informational. And I asked this, does Lowell have a big problem with lead pipes? I've heard, no, we don't, and I've heard. But again, the city manager at the last council meeting said, you know, if we don't, if we don't act, we're gonna have another flint on our hands. I think that puts a lot of pressure on the council. What I read, you know, and the information that we got tonight, I think was, was very good. You know, when we're talking about the interest rates and that type of thing. Yes, it's much cheaper to use the USDA than other things. I just, I just philosophically disagree with, yes, we can use the funds for paving and different things, sidewalks and everything, if we're doing sewer and everything on those. And I, I just don't think it's right that, that the ratepayers of Lowell Sewer Water should be paying for the use that, you know, a street gets paved. And I just would like to see some other means to finance that. The, you know, and I know the, the information, it's a small amount. But again, the city recently boasted about how they were able to raise the property tax evaluations and what that does, which in turn raises our taxes. So you not only see, you know, yes, we need to do something, and I'll support the council, but with the water and sewer, but you're, you're being inundated with so many other things, inflation with that. So it does, even though that is a small amount, as compared to your, your cable TV and dinner things, it's still, when you add all those things up, it puts a lot of pressure on a lot of people. The other, you know, there are some other questions I would still like to know. In, in your presentation and before, proposed projects for 2026, 27, 29, and 30, you have listed 278,000, 150,000, 189,300. I'd like to know what those, what those entail. You know, I just think it's, when you're talking about those numbers, I'd like to know what those entail. One of the last things is in 2021, a resolution was passed for 9.5 million for Monroe and Washington with a proposed rate at that time at 1.75, but was never executed. And, and at that time, it stated, you know, the study was to raise water between 1 and 3% to cover this and sewer from 3 to 7 for five years. I just, you know, I'd like to, now we're looking at 3.5 million at 2.875. So it's a higher, you know, if we would have acted in '21, maybe we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be at this juncture of, of gotta do it right now. And I, also what I'd, I'd like to know, what changed from 2021 to currently right now? You've answered about the township, their rates, you know, they'll still be getting the same great deal. And let me say, I don't know the answers. I don't have the answers. But I just feel like there's still quite a few questions. And again, thank you, thank you for tonight. I think it was much informative. It's something that should have been done some time ago. Thank you.
I can explain some of that. The reason the project got delayed was, we were actually planning on doing Monroe in 2022 and Washington in 2023. The issue came about right at the end of, we were in the process of, we were in the process of, we were in the process of moving forward in '22 for Monroe. At the last minute, USDA came in and said, and correct me if I'm wrong, we, originally, we're only supposed to provide easements for areas impacted by the project. At the 11th hour, they decided we needed to provide every easement the city had. That just delayed both projects. Then three months later said, oh, by the way, so we, at that point, we can't get this done in time for the construction season. So at that time, the, the, I'm sorry, correct it. So at that time, the, we had to delay, then a couple months later, USDA said, oh, no, by the way, no, we, we told you wrong. You can just go address the easements you had. Well, it took a whole year of this whole project on both ends. So that's the first issue. Finance-wise, I think one of the issues that we took into, when we did the original rate studies, I don't think we took into account, one, lead lines, two, we've had inflation. The other thing we've had is we've had significant, we've had significant issues. One of the issues that came up during the process, during this project that wasn't an issue was the Northwest Pump Station. We spent over $350,000 making investments to the Northwest Pump Station when it serves eight residents in our system. But because of our water agreement with the township, it's deemed an integrated system. So we had to flip at the time probably 60% of that cost. So I wondered the same thing, too, because I look at the numbers, I'm like, why did this go up so much? And that's the only thing I can conclude, is we've had, we've had significant issues. We've had, we've had, how many sewer issues have we had in the last three years, Ralph, that weren't accounted for, that become maintenance expenses? We've had a ton. So it, it's been a lot of different things.
One last thing?
Sure.
Is, because I've heard about this headwater, or headworks that we're gonna have to do. And I've heard a number of $9 million. And that's gotta be, and that, that's completely separate from, from the township deal, right? I mean, I, this, I'm asking those, is how are we going to finance that?
Right. So here's, here's the issue. I think one of the things is, the agreement for this township with sewer ends in 2027. We have to, if, we have to either expand the facility or upgrade the headworks. If they go, if they go on their own, we have to upgrade the headworks. That's about a $9 million cost. Total expansion cost is about $13 million, based on our last estimate we get, we received. That doesn't include whatever they extend out to, out to the district. But, yeah, there, we'll limp that along as long as we can, but it's gonna, that's gonna come due as well. It has to be done. Hopefully, we can come to an agreement where we are partnering with the township to address these needs together. It makes more sense, but also, I also don't think we put the city in a, you know, we're, we're in a, we're in a bad spot as it is. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna let the city be in a worse spot by not, you know, by making us, not, making them not pay their fair share. But it's, it's a very, it's been very complex issues. And that's all I can really say.
Dennis.
Dennis Kemp, 1700 Faith Drive. So I, you know, I've been kind of listening to this, and I, just a couple of things came to mind here. First of all, related to the township, the entire city has had to participate in the water ban in the summer sprinkling ban, basically because of the township growth. I'm sure the agreements don't allow you to do this, but, you know, I know people in the township, and they probably don't like me saying this, but I don't have a problem with the township paying a little bit of this also. It's all, if we're participating in one, they can participate in the other. It depends on what your agreements are, maybe it depends on what you're negotiating, Mike. The thing we have to be careful of with sewer water rates is that if they go too high, it has a potential discouraging growth, possibly discouraging industrial growth, which might affect, you know, your tax base. You know, the road projects are important, and I say that having, with my road being one of them, that was fixed. But if there is a way to restructure the road program, go out a little longer, and maybe take some, some, take some of the, some of the heat off the sewer and water revenue, maybe that's something that could be looked at. As at the risk of being fired for my Lowell cable TV position, I really don't mind using some of that for this problem. This is a bigger problem than a lot of, than a lot of the things that we, a lot of the things we do are, you know, I'm sorry, luxuries. This is kind of critical. You might want to think about, maybe not all, but some. Also, the Michigan Infrastructure Office has non-traditional grants, and they're a pain in the butt to go after, but they might be worth pursuing. I, I know a lot of those grants from the federal government have been spent and spent quickly, but there's, there's still some going out. It might be worth pursuing that. 4-H for a gallon million, just to me is more important than the 4-H for. It's my opinion. Thank you.
Tyler Kemp, 280 Jane Allen. Commenting a lot today, but we just had a master plan meeting, and we talked about affordability. I feel like this is kind of a slap in the face to that conversation earlier. Understanding these is not an easy answer. Dennis stole my thunder with the Michigan Infrastructure Office. I think we ought to really pursue that. It won't solve everything, but it will be an option. And if the Michigan Infrastructure Office pays for it, pays for the application and the development of that. Right now, Grand Rapids and other other cities are using it. We're sitting here debating what we can do. We ought to go in for that. It's free, we already paid for it. And I'm not fully aware of the SOL grants and the plans and the processes for that. And I don't expect an answer at this meeting, but are we required to do certain projects off of that? Because if we are, does that affect how we prioritize what we're doing now? And it doesn't seem like it might.
No, we moved last, there were things that, there were number of recommendations we will grow.
Okay.
And extend it up. Like, we've extended it a couple of, five, six, seven years. So we, there's no mandate to do it, but the fact of the matter is, these issues aren't going away.
Nope, nope. I, I understand it, and I appreciate what you're doing, looking at all the different ways of trying to not make this as impactful as it, as it appears. Just my last comment here before it escapes my mind is, as I know Dennis mentioned, the, the industry side, but it, it does affect, you know, a lot of people who just bought a home in Lowell, you know, me being one of them. After about six years of looking, finally getting one, you know, I know it's 5% up of whatever that was from constitutional limit, Plan A or whatever that was. Then basically, my assessed value doubled. So then having this automatically tapped on top of that over the next six years is really quite discouraging. And I'm not sure the best way to do that, but I think it's something to look at as a city. Probably for getting something on to you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Ellison, 407 North Division. I want to thank the city manager and the council members, especially the ones I had several concerns and sent several emails. I got some discussion from council member Saul Swiel and, and some of you who sent me emails. And the city manager answered a lot of my questions. And he was very honest about it, which I appreciate. And I can tell he's poured his soul into this, this whole project. But I still, as a taxpayer, as a lifelong resident, I'm still very concerned. My water bill is gonna go up. I'm on the low end. I mean, it's my husband and myself. We have the minimum. It's $70. My Lowell Light and Power bill is $70. But my water bill's gonna be $110. So that's pretty tough for fixed incomes, low income. If you look at the demographics of our city, we're mid to low income. It affects everybody. It affects the businesses. They pass it along to the customers. I mean, there's a big ripple effect. I know we have to replace this system. I know it's terrible. I didn't know you replaced the line. We replaced our own line. The city said they wouldn't do it. So I'd like to talk to somebody about that one. Anyway, I'm, I'm, you know, just not sure that this is the good way to do it. And since we talked about it, I mentioned the LCTV fund, which was infrastructure we sold. We gave the township some say in what to do with some of the monies. Maybe it's time to take that back. It was never mentioned. I know you, the city manager, you said that I've done everything. And then when I mentioned that, oh, here's something, maybe we could do that. So maybe there's something else out there. Maybe we could lower the percentage. Maybe we could use the marijuana and the, this, just to make it more palatable to businesses and to people. You know, I've talked to my daughter-in-law who lives in Wyoming. And yes, I know the comparisons, there are a lot more people, all this kind of thing. She pays $100 a quarter for her water. We, I looked at some of the rates, we're some of the highest around. And I know there's nobody coming to help us for a little town.